I'd like to call this meeting of the Town of Reinbeck Planning Board to order. First order of business. Just to take off my glasses. There have been modifications to the posted agenda, which I think I've sent, I've tried to send an update to all the planning board members and we'll go along with these as we go through the agenda. Couple people have asked to be excused from tonight's meeting. They'd like us to continue their hearings until next month, which will be September 18th, and so we will go down through those. Could I ask for a motion to accept the planning consultant's meeting notes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. I hope you've all had a chance to review the minutes of our July 17th meeting.
Yes.
Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, I think that was everybody.
Sounds close.
I didn't read them, so I can say aye.
Oh, okay. So noted. I don't have any correspondence or announcements. Does anyone else have anything? Okay, our first public hearing is in about four minutes. Possibly we could do one of the ZBA referrals in that time.
Actually, you have an addition to the published agenda.
Yes?
The addition to the published agenda is the referral from D E C.
Oh, yes, that's right.
It's in my meeting notes.
Yeah.
But that is an addition to the published agenda.
Has everyone had a chance to read over our meeting notes, so they know what this is about?
Yeah, I don't think, I think you may want to have a little greater discussion of that later in the meeting.
Yeah, I think so too.
But it should be identified as an addition to the agenda.
Yeah.
It's a D E C referral with a required response prior to your next meeting.
And there's some, I think, misunderstandings with D E C about some of the other procedures that have to be followed before that can happen. Okay, well, in that case, how about ZBA referral case number 945? Amory Gonzalez, 18 and 24 Pels Road, area variance. Area variances requested for minimum rear yard setback and lot area requirements authorized subject to subdivision plat approval lot line alteration between existing lots of record within the RC 5 district.
The variances here are two in number. This gentleman owns two adjacent lots, existing lots of record in the RC 5 district. They're both developed lots. He simply wishes to modify the lot line so as to enlarge the lot that he is retaining by about a quarter of an acre and reduce the adjacent lot commensurately. That requires approval by the ZBA because both lots are existing non-conforming. Secondly, when that occurs, there's a reduction in rear yard setback from the 25 feet that, from 80 16 to 25 essentially. There are no planning issues involved, and this is a matter that has been discussed with the applicant during a pre-submission conference, and he is fully aware and has acknowledged in the ZBA application that in order to effect the lot line alteration, he'll be coming to the planning board for subdivision plat approval following action by the ZBA.
Okay, does that make sense?
Sure.
Is there anyone? I will read an abbreviated version of the resolution. The planning board finds the requested area variances to raise no significant planning environmental issues. Beyond the consideration of the above, the planning board recommends the ZBA reply upon its own study of the fact. I'm sorry?
Let's read by somebody.
Lot of feedback? I will, I will sit back. Beyond its consideration of the above, the planning board recommends the ZBA rely upon its own study of the facts in deciding the application in accordance with the criteria and procedure set forth at Town Code Chapter 125, Section 125 through 124 C and D, including the consideration of the input of neighboring property owners. Three, as discussed with the applicant during a pre-submission conference on February 21st, 2017, subdivision plat approval by the planning board must follow grant of the area variances by the ZBA. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're good to go.
You might as well move on to the second one.
Well, actually, no, we have to do the first public hearing.
Okay.
Which we're not, now, it will become evident in a minute what we're going to do with that. Okay. The first public hearing. Elise Long and David Webb, 19 Russell Avenue, special use permits and site plan approval. Continuation from June 5th, 2017, as deferred on July 17th, 2017, of combined public hearing on applications for special use permits and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning in the matter of the proposed relocation eliminating encroachment on adjacent Kopischensky parcel and conversion with addition of an existing non-habitable contributing structure into a one-room detached accessory dwelling unit with connection to existing water and SDS and the citing of a prefabricated 96 square foot storage shed on a .189 acre parcel within the Ryancliffe Hamlet, Wrightwood Overlay, and Hudson River National Historic Landmarks Districts, the Town's LWRA, and being classified as a Type II action under SEAKER. Now, we have received no additional information from Elise Long, and the last information we did see, she wasn't sure if she wants to proceed with this or not proceed with this.
Make sure she's not represented this evening.
Is she represented this evening? Good point.
If she's not here, she's neither here nor represented.
Right. And wasn't at the last meeting either, as I recall. So before us, do we wish to continue this public hearing to September or continue it to a date to be determined later or consider it an abandoned application?
Well, it's been two months now?
I would say, yeah.
I say to be determined.
At a later date.
I mean, there's no point wasting.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's basically, that's number two, the number two paragraph in my meeting notes. The planning board suspends the conduct of the public hearing on the applications. It will not establish a date for continuation of the public hearing until requested additional affirmation has been submitted and found acceptable by the chair and the town planning consultant.
Okay. Could I hear a motion to so approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. All right, we have a few minutes until our next public hearing, so moving on to our next This is case number 945. Anthony Stryker and Melissa Schultz.
944.
Oh.
Yeah, the first one was 945.
Funny how those numbers jump around. 373 Mill Road, area variance. An area variance has been requested for minimum side setback requirement to authorize addition of a screened porch to a single-family dwelling within the rural agricultural RA 10 district. Once again, I will sort of give you the brief resolution. The planning board finds the requested area variance to raise no significant planning environmental issues. Beyond its consideration of the above, the planning board recommends the ZBA rely upon its own study of the facts in deciding the application in accordance with the criteria and procedures set forth at Town Code Chapter 125, Sections 125, 124 C and D, including consideration of the input of neighboring property owners. It does not anticipate any planning board approval be required of the project intended. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Very good. Well, we're getting closer to our next public hearing.
This is also the second item.
Which, yeah, it's going to be another shorty.
That letter is, you have a copy of the letter?
Yeah, we have a copy of the letter.
Okay. We have the letter to the record, I guess.
Well, I don't have the copy with me.
Okay.
But there is one, so.
Yeah. From Metropolitan Oral on behalf of the client.
Yes, exactly. And also I spoke with both John Marvin and Darren Dividovich about it to confirm what they're going to do. So we're awful close now, so, all right. Next public hearing. LXMI Property Holdings LLC, 18 Hagerty Hill Road, special use permit and site plan approval. Continuation from July 17th, 2017, of combined public hearing on the reapplication of LXMI Property Holdings LLC for special use permit and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning in the matter of the proposed construction of a five-bedroom dwelling, installation of related site improvements, and establishment of a one-bedroom detached accessory dwelling unit on a 15-acre parcel at 18 Hagerty Hill Road within the rural countryside RC 5 district, being the subject of prior Duchess County Health Department approval and classified as an unlisted action under SEAKER. Now, what's happened here is subsequent to our last meeting, we have received a letter, ooh, which I will read from Mr. Rodenhouse's office. Dear Chair Trimble and members of the board, please be advised that this firm represents LXMI Property Holdings LLC in connection with the development of the above referenced property. We respectfully request an adjournment of the continuing public hearing scheduled for August 21st, 2017 to September 18th, 2017, to allow the applicant additional time to resolve site plan issues with the neighbors. Thank you in advance for your consideration. What they're going to do, as we recall, there were a number of deed restriction issues which were brought up, and there is, in the deed restriction language that applies to these properties, an arbitration process for the neighbors to settle any differences. And the applicant has decided to proceed with that process to see if they can resolve those issues. I believe that's, that's basically the gist of why we're trying to wait. There were some other issues about permits, things like that, which were a little confused, but none of them have any relevance to holding up the further review of this by our board. But I think that we should offer this opportunity for them to adjourn until the 18th of September because I think the deed restriction issue was the real key one that was holding up, let's say, satisfaction of the various neighbors and the applicant as well to go forward with their project. Any questions?
Continue 18 September at 6:35.
Motion, please?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Had it not been resolved, I mean, gone to adjournment at this point, what would be our standing in terms of these other deed restrictions?
The planning board and the town has no authority to enforce deed restrictions that aren't part of-
But do we have authority to act in light of these restrictions being on the books?
Yes, we do. And I think also since it's a special use permit, we are authorized to attach conditions to the issuance of a special use permit. We could have considered if any of those deed restrictions actually fell within what we would ordinarily do in a situation like that and could conceivably have perhaps moved on some of them. But as, in general, no, we cannot enforce deed restrictions as a legal vehicle.
Thank you.
Were we just unaware of these restrictions the first time around?
No, we were aware of them. Actually, I don't know, I wasn't on the planning board then.
I thought, I thought this was in front of us-
It was in front of us about a year and a half, two years ago, or something like that.
And we went through approval.
We went through approval, and what happened-
The presence of the restrictions was not raised by any party at that point.
Right, at that time.
Just unaware of it.
Right. And the reason they're coming back now is because the site plan was never stamped and signed, and so it expired. And so basically, it's a reapplication to reapprove.
But that was just a technicality because we did approve it. The big mistake about the primary being, the secondary being built first.
There was all that, but that basically, since we approved the overall plan, I've been told, I spoke with John Lyons, that since we approved the overall plan, it didn't really matter which came first, because the whole plan had been approved. But the problem was, since it was never stamped and signed, a building permit should not have technically been issued, and it was, and then a CO should not have been issued after it was completed, and it was. But it's, that, you know, that's just a few little glitches, but they're nothing that we should be overly concerned about. Now the element I think most people are here for. One minute? Well, Greenwich Mean Time?
6:44.
Well, if I put my glasses back on, I could probably see it.
I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay. Let the record show that Sharon Sherrod is recusing herself from participating in this project.
Let the record show that Edna can recuse herself from the last one, too.
Oh.
That's right.
That's right. Well, actually, I had my glasses off.
Is a vote required to hold over the public hearing?
Yeah, I thought we did.
Oh.
I think we did. Anyway?
Yes.
I think we did.
Okay? All right. Okay, our next public hearing. Hudson Solar, 355 Wurttenberg Road, special use permits and site plan approval, conduct of combined public hearing on applications for special use permit, solar power plant and major excavation, and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning in the matter of proposed ground-mounted solar power plant on a leased portion of parcel owned by Barry Sherrod and located with the rural countryside RC 5 and agricultural 20 districts, and adjacent to a national register historic properties being classified as a Type I action under SEAKER for which a SEAKER NOI to serve as lead agency has been issued by the planning board.
And here's your checklist to go through in terms of sequence.
I want to just explain a few things tonight, because I think there's been some confusion about part of the way this process is going to go forward. In order for the planning board to do the complete review, we need to have confirmed who is lead agency under SEAKER. It's a Type I action, there has to be a lead agency. We did issue a notice of intent to be the lead agency for this project. I believe it went out on the 9th of this month. We have to allow 30 days for all other agencies who might have an interest in taking that role before we can be affirmed as lead agency, and that won't happen, obviously, tonight. Our next meeting is September 18th, and at that meeting, we anticipate we will be affirmed as lead agency. We feel the only other agency that really might have an interest in it would be NYSERTA, and they have already asked us if we would do it. So we're pretty sure that we will be confirmed, but to make sure that we are within the law, we have to wait until we are affirmed. So at this point, the SEAKER review will not commence until the 18th of September. And it is a Type I action, so it is going to be a very vigorous and it's going to be a very exhaustive review. If you've seen the long form, you see the issues that we have to address, that we have to deal with. So tonight, what we're going to be doing is we're going to have a presentation by the applicant of what's proposed. We're going to have a report from the planning board members who did a site visit, from the CAB who did a site visit. We've already received a somewhat detailed letter from Morris Associates, our engineer, about the engineering aspects of this project and things that they would like to see done. We've received a letter from the town historian, who does not have an issue with this going forward in terms of historic properties. We also have a confirmation from our planning consultant that this application does meet the requirements of the new solar energy law that we have, that the town board adopted a few weeks, a few months back. So we have that as well. At the conclusion of these reports, we're going to open this up to the public for all of you to speak. What I'm going to ask you to do is come up, identify who you are, speak into the microphone. Please be addressing the planning board. Tonight, basically, since we're restricted in what we can do, we're just going to be taking your comments, we're just going to be listening to what you have to say. I think it's safe to say that this public hearing is going to be going on for quite a while, so this will not by any means be your only opportunity to speak. As more information is gathered, particularly as we go through the SEAKER process, there may be consultants that we are going to be hiring to help us with some of the questions. It may answer some of your questions, it may raise other questions for you. So you will obviously have the opportunity to bring those questions forward and other concerns you might have. So I just wanted to make sure everyone understood how this process works. It's not going to be a quick process, it's going to take time. But I thought it was important, there had been some confusion about what's going to happen, when it's going to happen, and are people going to be limited in their ability to present to the planning board? That's not the case, that will not be happening. So.
Michael?
Yes?
Gretchen just alerted me, alerted me to two additional referral-based items. One is a report was received late Saturday noon from the Conservation Advisory Board. She was just going downstairs to the office to get a copy of that report.
Uh, thank you.
And secondly, Duchess County Planning has responded to the referral and simply identified this matter as a matter of local concern.
Okay. Basically, what he's saying is the CAB has issued a report which Gretchen's going down to get now, so we can read that into the record if there's not someone here to do it. And we also refer all projects to Duchess County Planning and Development Department, and they have come back and told us they consider this a matter of local concern, so they will not be further involved in it. Okay. Jeff, if you'd like to do your presentation.
Well, unfortunately, the technology is not working.
Oh.
So, one thing I could do is, I could go back to 20 minutes, I have a little problem with, and we could pick it up again. Do you? Or I can talk verbally?
Why don't we try to talk verbally at this point? Because I think everybody here, I think this is really what people are here to hear tonight, and then be able to voice their concerns and their comments.
So, good evening. I'm Jeff Irish with Hudson Solar. I had intended to show a presentation on slides with pictures, but the technology isn't working. It sounds like I'll have an opportunity at a subsequent public hearing to present that information anyway. So unfortunately, tonight, I'm going to have to talk through it. I can probably get a good portion of the message out. I think a picture's worth a thousand words, and I won't have a thousand words to say, but we'll at least get the conversation started here. I'm going to talk about a bunch of different topics that have come to me over the past few months. Since we first started developing this project, I've had multiple conversations with neighbors in the area. There's been a common thread and concern about the project, and I understand that. This is the first, will be the first, or could be the first, community solar system in Duchess County, and probably only the second one in Central Hudson's territory. The reason for that is its small size. There are many other larger projects coming, but the smaller ones are generally easier to get connected to Central Hudson's grid, for which this project already has approval. I've talked to a lot of the neighbors, and some of whom I see their signatures on petition that I got a copy of this afternoon. Many of them I've talked to after they had already signed the petition, and they had questions regarding different aspects of the project. A lot of common themes, though. They'd heard it would make noise, that it would be highly visible, it would stick up in the air, that there'd be trucks coming day and night, that it would involve the addition of a lot of high voltage that's not already present in the area, that it would involve a lot of running of wires to people's homes, all sorts of things. So I'm prepared to address some of that tonight, and I can repeat it at a subsequent public hearing and with the help of some pictures and some other things. So, first of all, community solar, that's what this is about. This is a community solar system. It's a brand-new concept for New York State. It was introduced on an initiative from the governor and the legislature through a Public Service Commission order in July of 2015. The intent of community solar was to let the 75% approximately of New Yorkers who wanted solar but could not benefit from it to be able to benefit from it. And there's lots of reasons why people have not been able to benefit from solar. If you have a good roof, you can benefit from it. If you have open ground and you can site a ground mount, you can benefit from it. But if you live in a place like the Village of Reinbeck, or the Hamlet of Rein Cliff, or even some of the homes, other homes throughout the community here, or places like the condominium complexes we have here at the woods, you can't benefit from solar. You've not been able to benefit from it. So New York State introduced community solar to allow everyone to benefit and participate in solar energy. So how does community solar work? It involves citing a solar array. By New York State regulations, the maximum permitted size at this time would be about 14 acres or so. You cite it in a sunny spot, facing south, and generally in an unshaded area so that you can get the maximum production from the solar system. That allows some efficiencies which can benefit people if they want to become members of How did I come to this site, or how did my company come to this site? We have looked at and continue to look at dozens of potential sites. There's a number of things we look for. First of all, access to the grid. There's plenty of large parcels where you could cite community solar, but Central Hudson does not have a three-phase feeder running nearby. Three-phase is essential for community solar projects. Early on, I applied for a community solar system on my own property. I was too far from three-phase, and Central Hudson determined that it was not viable. Wurttenberg Road happens to have an existing 7,600-volt feeder, three-phase, that runs right down the road. It crosses Wurttenberg Road about four times as you come in from the equestrian facility at the north end. It weaves primarily through people's backyards, front yards, and when it gets down to about 355 Wurttenberg Road, it runs right behind the bed and breakfast. It's basically cutting through some backyards in between Wurttenberg Road and Route 9G. That same voltage already crosses Wurttenberg Road at multiple points into all of the neighbors' properties. And then they have a transformer and a meter. That voltage crosses Wurttenberg Road right at Barry Sherrod's place and also goes to the neighbor to the north at that point. So that was something that we looked for that made this site relatively attractive, that that voltage and that service from Central Hudson was already present on the property. Another thing we look for are, at least from my company's point of view, are lots and sites where we can hide the system from view. There are plenty of solar systems, community solar systems, larger ones being applied for and in Central Hudson's Q right now, that are highly visible, running along roadways, running along highways, encompassing farmers' fields, in valleys which are visible from everybody around them. We like the Sherrod site because it doesn't have a lot of those things. The site itself is 16 acres. The size of the system we're contemplating putting up would cover, the fenced area would be about 12% of that. That's 1.86 acres. And it allows us, because it's a flag lot, which means it has a narrow driveway and then a large square to the east of it, it allows us to place the system essentially in the middle of the 16-acre parcel. So that by doing that, we're already, for example, 668 feet at its closest point from Wurttenberg Road. And we can be anywhere between 167 feet and 250 feet from any of the neighbors' properties. So that was an attractive situation at that site. Another thing that we liked about it was that the topography and the existing vegetation helps provide for screening. The road into the property actually rises up from Wurttenberg Road. So one of the things that we're looking for is, we don't want to cite these systems in a valley. If you cite them in a valley, everybody who's around the valley is going to be able to look down into it. We don't want to cite them on a flat field because it's very difficult to screen. But if we can get them up on top of a plateau and set back from the ridge of the plateau, we can help provide for screening and make the system not visible. And we were able to achieve that, we think, with this site. The existing vegetation also is attractive here. We have a heavily forested area between the church and the site, and we have another heavily forested area to the east, to the neighbor to the east. So those existing forests help provide a buffer. The entire site itself, up on top of the plateau, is heavy brush, basically. It's honeysuckle bushes, small cedar trees that are maybe 10 feet tall, those kinds of things. So that provides natural screening in some ways, and it- So, that provides natural screening, in some ways, and it also helps make the site suitable for a community solar system of this size. So, relative to the size, I mentioned that there are other systems, larger systems, in Central Hudson's territory. Right now, there's 76 systems in Central Hudson's Q. 69 of them are larger than this site. 68 of them are 14 acres in size. This proposed system would be the sixth smallest system currently contemplated in Central Hudson's entire territory. Environmental design, and so I want to talk about that, because many of the neighbors have asked me questions about that. We're taking some steps to help make sure that this is an environmentally friendly project. Solar is a good thing. Solar generates electricity from the sun. It displaces fossil fuel use. It helps provide for grid stability, and it helps people lower their electric bills. There's some other things you can do when you develop a community solar site like this that can make it environmentally friendly. Rhinebeck, for example, has passed the law, in their law, stating a requirement that you cannot treat the ground in any way with Roundup, or Tampa, or anything like that. That's common out west. We wouldn't think of doing that. On the other hand, what we intend to do here is follow some emerging guidelines coming out of New York State, and fill the entire site with pollinator field. The state of Vermont is about four or five years ahead of New York State in the development of community solar. The state of Vermont has come out with a scorecard for filling solar, community solar array areas with pollinators, and we're working with the Cornell Cooperative Extension and Hudson Valley Seed Company to populate the entire 1.86 fenced acres with pollinator-friendly plants. There's some added benefits to doing that from a maintenance point of view. What we're told by the consultants the state has hired is that after two or three years, when the pollinators become established, the maintenance requirements drop to a single mowing in the spring, and a single mowing after August 15th. In the meantime, you have 1.86 acres of pollinators, which would be equivalent to, I think he said, 1,200 people planting 10-foot-by-20-foot pollinator field in their garden, in their own property. Pollinators, for people who don't know, are important, because they support bees and other similar insects that are critical for the environment, and have been stressed a lot. Bees travel up to three miles, so the concept here is that it would benefit agriculture and crop development and such, in basically a three-mile radius of the site. Another thing that we're going to do on the environmental design aspect here is follow a best practice, which is to provide small animal access holes every 50 feet. So, what you do is, about every 50 feet around the fence, you have a hole that's about eight inches tall by 12 inches wide. It allows smaller animals, rabbits, turtles, all sorts of things, to get through, yet still provides a protection that's necessary to keep humans out of an active solar field. So, that's something we're pretty interested in. And then, tying back to the screening and the visibility aspect, our intent here is to maintain basically all of the brush, the existing brush that's surrounding the solar field, and enhance it with, in some selected areas, with some additional screening where The screening plan, at this point, encompasses a berm, a large berm. We think it's going to be about 500 cubic yards in size. That's just, I would say, a suggestion at this point. The reason for a berm, and we would locate it along the south side of the property, is that an earthen berm with an agricultural supportive topsoil mix on top of it, that we could put plants on, if it was six feet high, would ensure that there was no visibility from the neighbor to the south. And the neighbor to the south is the one who is likely to have the most potential to see it. But if there's an earthen berm that's about the same height as the solar array, which is about seven feet eight high, with plants on the top of it, we think that would be pretty effective year-round screening. Noise. So, I'll talk about noise briefly here. Many of the neighbors I've talked to have said they signed a petition because they heard that solar systems make noise. That may be the case in some of the larger, more industrial systems. That's not the case with this system. Noise comes from two sources on a solar system like this. It comes from the electronic inverters, and it comes from the transformer, which converts the Central Hudson voltage down to the output voltage of the solar inverters. The solar inverters that we've picked for this project are residential solar inverters. It's residential technology using DC optimizers and module-level power electronics with residential-type inverters. It's the same type of technology that's currently being installed on approximately half of the rooftop systems, solar systems, in New York State right now. We are picking that equipment because it happens to suit this project, and it also ensures that the noise level will be low. The noise, inverters can make noise. Their spec for these residential-level inverters is 55, less than 55 dBA, which is the measurement for noise. There'll be 13 inverters, and together, they would produce, if they were all making noise at the same time, about 65 dBA or so. 60 to 65 dBA is the equivalent of human conversation. And I also like to explain how and when solar inverters do make noise, these solar inverters. The noise comes from fans. They have, the solar inverters have cooling fans. The cooling fans are essentially muffin fans. They're thermostatically controlled, meaning they come on with temperature, and they're the same kind of fans that are in desktop computers. So, when one of these fans comes on, it sounds like a desktop computer. But the fans only come on when the temperature in the inverter goes over 131 degrees Fahrenheit. These inverters are designed to be installed inside buildings, inside enclosed spaces, where temperatures can rise in the room, because the inverters give off a little bit of heat, and that can cause the inverter fans to come on. These inverters will be located outside, on the north side of the solar panels, shielded from the sun. So, they are going to come on very rarely. They'll only come on, first of all, solar systems only operate during daytime. That should be obvious to people. They achieve peak power around solar noon. So, the inverters will only heat up, and the fan, the chance of the fans coming on will only generally be, probably be between about 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM on the very hottest of summer days. And even then, only if the inverter temperature hits above 131 degrees Fahrenheit. So, we think that the fans will operate very rarely, and when they do, if they all came on at the same time, you'd have the equivalent of human conversation approximately 200 or 300 feet away from the nearest neighbor. When you stand up at that site, you can hear noise right now, and it's called Route 9G. It's not that far away. It happens all the time. It's intermittent, which is the worst kind of noise for human disruption, and it's 24/7. And when you're standing up there, when I went up there with the planning board people last week, you can hear 9G. And if you can hear cars, you're not going to hear a muffin fan from 150 feet away. Safety. Okay. There were also some issues raised in Amanda's letter, some concerns about safety. So, I'll talk about safety a little bit here. This is proven technology. Solar systems like this in New York State, and this one, will be designed in compliance with the New York State Building Code, the National Electrical Code, the New York State Public Service Commission standardized interconnection requirements for generating facilities, New York State Energy Research and Development Authority's requirements for solar system, for solar system design and construction. All of the equipment is UL-listed. UL is Underwriter Laboratories. Underwriter Laboratories exist to support the insurance industry, and to make sure that electrical equipment does not start fires, and that failure modes of electrical equipment are such that fires will not occur, or can be self-extinguishing. All of that is, will be encompassed in this system design, as it is in all the other solar systems that we design. Another aspect about this, though, coming back to the residential inverter equipment that we're using. The residential, solar residential inverters require a thing called rapid shutdown, if you put them on roofs. If it's the roof of a dwelling unit, you have, your system has to incorporate what's called rapid shutdown. That means, in the event of a fault, the supply of solar energy is disrupted within 10 seconds, within 10 feet of the solar panels. And that technology is what we are incorporating in this system. That is not the usual technology that's incorporated into community solar or solar farm designs, but it's what we're including here. So, in the event of a fault, the solar power and the electrical current from it is deactivated within 10 feet of the modules. And then finally, on safety and construction practices, we've been doing this for 15 years. We have over 1,600 systems installed in the region. 78 of them are here in the town of Rhinebeck, and we know what we're doing. Monitoring and security was brought up as well. National Electrical Code requires that this system be fenced, and it will be fenced in compliance with the requirements of the town law. Also, the module-level power electronics and the residential equipment we're using here will give us the ability to monitor through the Internet in real time every single solar panel's production. So, if there is a failure, we know it right away, and we receive an alert, an email alert, just like we receive when one of our residential customers loses a solar module. We're also planning to have video cameras around the site, protecting the array, and those two will be connected to the Internet, and will be encompassing all of the normal electrical safety and security requirements that come with the Electrical Code. Maintenance and upkeep. I'll finish on that. There was some concern, I've heard from neighbors, that they've heard that, no, I won't finish on that, sorry, I have to talk about construction process as well. But I'll talk about maintenance and upkeep. There was some concern from some neighbors that this would involve trucks coming day and night. I was told that by three or four different people. Trucks coming day and night is not how we harvest and deliver solar energy. It's done quietly through electrical wires. Our anticipation, based on our experience with other commercial ground-mounted systems like this, is that we will, besides the mowing, which I think we can get down to two or three times a year, we'll probably visit the site about once or twice a year, generally to just do a visual inspection, and also to replace or repair any equipment that may have gone out, if we see an optimizer or a module drop out. So, the impact, the ongoing impact on the neighborhood and community here will be very, very little. This will be the quietest neighbor and the quietest property on Wurtenberg Road that's populated, I'm sure. Construction process and timeline. We estimate that the construction will take about eight weeks. I'd heard from several of the neighbors, they were concerned that this could go on for months and months. Our experience indicates it would take about eight weeks. I've talked to some of the neighbors who have situations where they have a concern about noise at certain times of the early morning, and in the late afternoon, and we can adapt the construction timeline around that. The only real noise generating construction activity is going to be in the first two weeks. In the first two weeks, there will be the brush hogging to clear the brush in the area. There will be the construction of the berm, if it's decided that that's a requirement for the visual mitigation. And then there will be pushing of posts into the ground. The solar system itself is mounted on steel posts that are pushed into the ground, and we plan to keep that work in a timeframe that'll be suitable for some of the neighbors nearby, that that is important to. Excavation, the only excavation that's going to be required is electrical trenching. An electrical trench is basically about 12 inches wide, typically, in this case, about 36 inches deep. We trench it, we lay conduit in it, we backfill it on the same day, which eliminates any stormwater runoff issues. And we think there'll be about two days of electrical trenching to bury the wires from the solar array, to get them back down towards Wurtenberg Road. That, without my pictures, I think that's all for now, so.
Decommissioning.
Decommissioning, okay. So, New York State Energy Research and Development Authority has recommended that solar systems like this, community solar systems, have a decommissioning plan. Decommissioning means we have to articulate and specify a plan to remove the system after 25 years, and return the ground to its natural condition. I've submitted a decommissioning analysis and plan to the planning board as part of the application. We came at the numbers two ways. One way is we did a time and material study ourselves, and we came up with one estimate, and then nicer, the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority has also published what they think typical decommissioning costs would be in our area, and the numbers are coming in about the same. So, we're pretty confident we have the decommissioning costs bracketed and defined pretty well. But New York State has also said that, recognized that the scrap metal costs from decommissioning a solar system like this, in many cases, can offset or exceed the cost of the material and labor to remove them. And that's consistent with our analysis here. The value of the steel, the copper, the aluminum that would be removed and recycled exceeds our estimates of the decommissioning cost. So, that, in some cases, that can be considered a way to provide for the funding of the decommissioning. Of course, that's up to this board. I think there was one question that was brought up at the application night by Eric, when I did talk about decommissioning then, and that was the, how do you, what do you do with solar panels? And do they have hazardous chemicals in them? These solar panels do not. The solar panels we're using here are crystalline silicon. They're considered essentially benign. There is a type of solar panels that are used commonly in these large solar farms. They're cadmium telluride, and those, that is hazardous stuff, and they do require special treatment and disposal. But the solar panels we're using here, the cadmium, the crystalline silicon panels, are the same type that are used on people's homes, in their backyards, and do not contain hazardous chemicals.
Thank you. Edna and Eric, I think you did the site visit?
Yes.
We did. I think it's too bad that we don't have visuals. Eric and I were able to walk in- Eric and I were able to walk into the site and walk around the perimeter of the array because it had been brush hogged. And as Jeff said, the area is full of relatively small cedar trees and a lot of what I think is snowberry. It's a bush about five feet tall with white berries on it.
I think it's a, I think it may be a dogwood, shrub dogwood species.
Possibly, possibly dogwood. Anyway, they were about five feet tall, and there were so many that you could not, if it had not been brush hogged, you could not walk around the perimeter. Jeff mentioned that it's on kind of a plateau, I'm talking about the array. There wasn't a real sense of walking up to it. It could be useful to have a topographical map that shows the site and also the neighboring There was only one point where we were able to see any building outside of the property, and that was a small garage, and I'm not sure exactly what direction that was in.
South end, that's the south end.
The south end, right. So, we saw a corner of a garage. It seemed at the time that by some means, it should be possible to totally disguise this array. The question is exactly what would be the best way to do that, and so that it would disguise it throughout all of the seasons. And so, I think you and I both agree that there ought to be a professional analysis, some sort of a visual analysis done by someone who is also able to recommend ways to disguise it from any neighboring properties. That also raised another issue. Hudson Solar is leasing something like two acres for this array. The rest of the property will not be available to Hudson Solar, except, I guess, an easement to get in and out, correct?
Yes, I know where you're going.
I'd like to finish and go there.
Yeah, certainly.
Okay. The question is, if Hudson Solar is not leasing the entire property, and some way to disguise the array includes things that have to be maintained, and the, a special permit is given to Hudson Solar, then who actually has the permit? Who is responsible for taking care of the maintenance of the things that hide the array? And that was not clear to me. Do you have anything to add?
No, I concur that a real study has to be made because, you know, we went at the, probably the time of densest foliage in the summertime, and there's no real way to know what that's going to look like in the wintertime without being there in the wintertime. And even in that case, if there's a species die-off, for instance, we're now having a large ash die-off, and if there's a large cedar die-off any time in the future, then all of a sudden, this array could be very visible. So, I think we really need to have somebody come in and do a topo of this and do the, and show where the buildings are in, you know, relative to it, where the road is relative to it, and if there is line of sight to this array in actuality. Without that, we're just hoping and guessing.
I guess I can, I have been in touch with George James, who's a specialist in doing visual analysis. He does it for telltale towers, he's done it for other facilities like this, things like that, asking him if he would be willing to work with us on this, and he said that he would be.
Would he have the ability to also say the best thing to use is this?
Yeah, this is sort of what he does, to try and disguise a number of these industrial-type things, and I've also spoken to Jeff about it and explained to him, I think, the necessity of having an independent expert both analyze the site, see what needs to be done from a screening standpoint, and how it can most effectively be done so that it's, you know, as permanent as it can be.
Right. I mean, I was having questions like, let's say that wonderful vegetation is brought in at some expense, and it really does the job, and then the property gets sold, and the next person wants to farm goats on it. Well, they eat everything. So, I mean, what do you do about that to make sure that once everything is put in place, it stays there and it's maintained?
That will be one of the challenges we face in terms of any potential approval, to ensure that it does stay in place and that it is maintained and replaced if necessary.
The other thought that I had, since a fence, a solid fence, a good-looking solid fence of up to eight feet with special permit is allowed, is that something that could also be considered?
I would think anything would be considered.
It would end up looking like somebody's garden.
Yeah.
A very large one.
Right.
I think all the options will have to be looked at and assessed and see what's going to work and what's not going to work.
Can I ask, is our criteria to get zero visibility of this from any neighboring property?
I think that's what we shoot for.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what we shoot for.
And so, anything less than that, we would consider this to be?
A problem.
A problem, okay, very good. And I have a few more questions for Jeff.
Sure.
First, you said there is going to be small access holes intermittently along the fence for small animals. Why not have the fence so that the bottom layer is accessible for small animals all along? You know, 20 feet is a half a day's work for a turtle, so.
As long as someone can crawl underneath it, I think that would probably be fine.
Yeah, I mean, if you put a, you know, a vertical every, you know, but have it mainly open and it's not accessible by a human being, that should be, I would think, superior than having them look for the next access hole.
Yeah.
And look for the next access hole on the way out, too.
Yep.
Also, these inverters, you say, will be on the north side. Are they all going to be located in one place?
No, they're, that's indicated on the site plan drawing.
So, well, the reason I ask that is that there was analysis done for the accumulated effect of many inverters, the sound, and it seems to me that that only would take effect if they were all located in the same place.
Correct.
Whereas if they're separated by 50 feet or whatever, then each one is, you know, inverse square rule diminished from the one next to it, and you don't get that accumulative effect. Is that true?
Correct, and they're split roughly equally. There's 13, so it's not a complete equal split, but they're split with, they're separated by, into two, they're separated by 54 feet.
54 feet?
Yes.
Okay, that sounds significant to me. Is there any way we could set up a demonstration of something that puts out 55 or 65 dB-A?
55 dB-A is your refrigerator running.
My refrigerator or your refrigerator?
Well, the average refrigerator.
Is this fan 65 dB-A, 55 dB-A?
That, my hearing's not that good.
All right, well, I'm just trying to get, you know, so people can really get an idea of what that sound is and what we're talking about.
Yeah, there are tables supplied by various organizations that specify.
Can we have an instrument in the Tony office?
I believe the village police department have it, I think.
All right. I would think that would be a good, a good thing to do, just to establish what we're actually talking about.
Well, I don't think you need to use that instrument to take noise measurements of something, but I could supply tables of common devices that, and the noises they common, the noise level they commonly make that's readily available.
I like the, I like the actual demonstrations, nothing wrong with that, because I think a lot of people might want to sit here and listen.
I think that we would be better benefited by that than take, looking at a table and saying, oh, okay.
Okay.
That's just my opinion.
Fair enough.
Also, you said the posts are to be pushed into the ground, pushed or pounded?
It's pounding.
Okay, so they will be making noise when they're pounding those into the ground?
Yes.
Okay. And how long will that process take approximately?
You can get all of the posts for this system in, within a week.
A week.
Maybe four days.
And all the electrical will be run underground from the enclosure to, out to Wurtemberg Road to the pole on Wurtemberg Road?
No, there's existing poles that come in off Wurtemberg Road.
Okay.
That bring the voltage up to that empty garage or that's on the site, so it'll go up that far, up to about where that garage is.
Okay, they'll be underground until that garage, and then they'll be?
No, it's overhead as it is now until that garage, and then it goes underground from that point on.
Oh, I see, okay.
Central Hudson wants it above ground until they're metering.
And you said that the plant will be decommissioned after 25 years. Is that mandatory, that it be decommissioned?
No.
And what happens to the panels as they, you know, you have a 25-year warranty on them, but every once in a while, one doesn't quite make it that long? You'll be replacing them?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll be stocking service bears.
So, and then what do you envision the process be for recommissioning the plant if there have been no problems with it and everybody likes it?
You just keep it operating.
Just keep it operating.
Just don't, just don't throw the switch.
There's no requirement to recommission it at that point.
Yeah, that would require, you know, the co-op that is, that represents the neighbors and the landowner coming to an agreement 25 years out, which we think is going to happen in a lot of cases, but, you know, we have to allow for the decommissioning as required by the law.
Okay, and the last question is, Edna had asked you, and I think she alluded to it this time, whose name is this application being done in?
Hudson Solar.
Hudson Solar, so you are the agency that will maintain it?
Yes.
That will, you know, and so then the other aspect of maintaining the barrier, the visual barrier around it would also be on Hudson Solar at that point?
Yes, that's what we anticipate, and we anticipate that that will be done through the land lease agreement.
Okay.
So.
So, but the rest of the property then could be used to raise goats? If the berms are effective and it's not visible from any other place?
We will contractually maintain any required screening. If we go with a fence, then we don't, you know, you could, you could raise everything down, and you could turn it into a lawn outside the fence, I guess, and still have visual screening. But if there's vegetated screening required, that would be our responsibility as the operator. New York State requires that community solar arrays have what's called a sponsor and an operator, and Hudson Solar will be the sponsor and operator for this system. We have to maintain it, operate it, we have to file monthly reports to the electric utility, annual reports to the Public Service Commission, and take care of the members that are participating in it.
All right, and just a comment is, you know, a 25-year-old berm is not a bad-looking thing, a 25-year-old fence is not often a good-looking thing, so I just, just to put that in.
Okay, comment. All right, and to answer one of the questions that Edna brought up was, topographic lines are indicated on the site plan. At the entrance where we came in and where we parked our cars, we're at about 384 feet of elevation, and the system itself is up at, averages around 420.
Yeah, I was interested in seeing the neighboring properties also being on the topo map.
Okay, yeah, there's, yeah, okay, that can be expanded.
We have technology these days to produce a 3D model of this thing that people can look at, can see their house and see the site from their house.
Yeah, we've done that, and I wish, maybe next month I'll show that, but we've flown the site with a drone.
Yeah.
We've taken a number of pictures, and through software, we've compiled the pictures into a 3D model of the site. One of the things that was evident, for example, is we overflew the church. There's a, you can see the hill, there's actually a hill that rises up to over 430 feet between the church and the array, so from the church, you got to go up a hill through the woods and then down behind the hill. The high point on the property is literally the corner that's between the church and the array. So, all that is, you can see that in the drone analysis.
Thank you.
That's a thousand words right there.
Is there anyone here from the C A B? All righty, I'll read their report, it's short. The Conservation Advisory Board, upon review of the submitted application documents to date, this board finds there to be no impact to the environmental policies set forth in the town of Rhinebeck zoning code. The proposed site of the ground-mounted panels is not infringing on agricultural land nor would it require the removal of trees. The use of pollinating plants in and around the panels will benefit the hilltop environs. The C A B does not foresee difficulties with water runoff, u-shed, or excessive land disturbance within the scope of the proposal. The C A B has a positive outlook on this application. Respectfully submitted, Ryan Doughton. We're still waiting to hear back from the New York State Parks Recreation Historic Preservation Bureau. Okay, at this point, I'd like to open this up to public comment. What I'm going to ask you to do is just come up to the microphone, identify who you are, and then please feel free to say the comments that you'd like to say and speak tonight. I do want to remind you that there are going to be a number of other opportunities to speak on this, particularly as more information is gathered through the study process.
... has been received.
Oh, from?
With your letters that don't need to be repeated.
Oh, yes, okay, yeah, Art just reminded me. In terms of letters that we've received, and if anyone has written a letter would like to read it, they can. From Joanna Payalella and David Cliffon?
Hello, Michael.
I'm sorry?
Do you see how old I am?
Oh, sorry. Okay, Joanna Payalella and David Cliffon has sent a letter, was delivered on the 16th of this month. Jaclyn Murray emailed her concerns on the 9th and the 16th of this month. Mella Stevens has emailed a letter on the 18th, which she's not here tonight, she asked me if I'd read it, it's a paragraph. Philip and Jennifer Karate delivered a letter on August 21st today. Amanda Miller hand-delivered a folder with concerns and a petition today. Ms. Miller and Michael Trimble have been having an email correspondence since August 4th, just so you're aware of that as well. I'll read the one letter that I have in front of me. If you have letters you'd like to read, you can, if you just, just to paraphrase, if you just wish to speak just extemporaneously, if that's the right word, please feel free. Just be respectful of one another and understand that there's going to be a long process, there's a lot of information we need to gather still to get this thing to go forward. So, I'll read this and then, there'll be open.
Can we not ask questions? Do you not want to speak away?
You can, any questions, you can direct them to me if you would.
No.
Okay, that'll just, I think it'll make, today, and that'll just make things a little easier, I think. Okay, I'm going to just read this one letter. This is from Mella Stevens. I'm an immediate neighbor to the proposed Hudson Solar. Can you hear me? I don't want to have the feedback. The proposed Hudson Solar Array at 355 Wurtemberg Road. I have lived at 356 Wurtemberg Road for nearly eight years and have enjoyed walking along it for an additional four years as a neighbor, then based within a mile on Route 9G. I ask that this correspondence be read into the public record on August 24th as I will be out of town. I do want it known that there are neighbors who are in favor of the project, myself included. I appreciate knowing who my immediate neighbor is, which was not the case at all before the property was sold. It will not affect the natural beauty of the road, for my understanding, it won't require traffic to the property once the installation is complete. It has no noise factor involved save for the occasional lawn mowing, and there is no risk factor involved living close to solar installation. Excuse me, installations. While solar panels aren't beautiful, these won't be visible, so in my humble opinion, that also becomes a moot point. The fact that it also provides those in the community who are interested in having solar power with that option is just more good news, more good news for me. Many thanks for your attention to this. Mella Stevens. And with that, I'd like to open it up, if you raise your hand and I can, yes.
Me?
Yes. I'm sorry, I don't know all your names, so I'll be doing a lot of pointing.
Mike, we need addresses too, so names and address.
The clerk has asked me if you can give your name and your address.
So, my name is Amanda Miller. I live at 329 Wurtemberg Road. I am two properties north of the proposed solar power plant. I know we have time next time to kind of address the things that Jeff laid out, so just briefly, so I don't forget, I just want to read something from your noise ordinance. Prima facie evidence of noise disturbance, the following shall be considered prima facie evidence of noise disturbance. A sound level reading taking at a residential property line arising from another residential property above 60 dB-A during the time period commencing at 7:00 a.m. and ending at 8:00 p.m. Can I put this here? Jeff mentioned things like, he noticed on the petition, it was signed before he had a chance to speak to whichever neighbor. There has not been a single neighbor who contacted me, and believe me, I've given everyone every piece of information about myself, my phone number, my email address, my physical address. There hasn't been one single neighbor to contact me, to tell me to take them off this petition. So, an insinuation that all of a sudden they had some change of heart, no one has told me about that, so I don't want anyone here to think that. That was one point. The second point, the solar field is not in the middle of this piece of land. At the last meeting, I actually asked Jeff, can you put it in the middle of the land? He said, no, he couldn't. I don't know why he can't. I don't know if it's something to do with the actual solar law or if it's just because he can't, but it's not in the middle of the field, it's basically in the northeast corner of the field. the field. A Hudson Solar customer nearby did tell me that his inverters in his garage hum. These are, it looks like, at least from the information sheet that I can gather, the largest inverter on that sheet. And while they're not, I guess maybe all on top of each other, it looks like maybe half are on one row and another half are on the other row, they are all on one side of the field, right next to, or the closest to, Mr. Karate's property, which is the property immediately and adjacent to the field on the north. Again, you know, Jeff said the words, quote, "very rarely" in terms of when these fans will go on and if there will be noise. And I just think everyone should remember those words. You saw in the letter I submitted, the Town of Edgar Town, they were told something similar, and they had noise going through their trees and traffic noise as well, and they still heard the hum. I don't, I really don't want that to happen to us if you guys decide to go forward with this project. So I think getting a DBA meter out, doing an actual demonstration, having this thing set up in a way, I think is necessary and important, and I think that's outlined in our letter, that there needs to be a noise impact study and not just, you know, people looking at a sheet and someone saying it's the sound of your refrigerator. There's going to be 13 refrigerators and a transformer. We don't have the information sheet to the transformer, so I, at least, not that I've seen the materials. So I don't know where also the transformer's going to be. I try to look for it on the map to know if it's going to be close enough to the inverters to add to the noise. And again, I don't know the noise level of the transformer. I've been told that transformers do make noise. All I heard was what was attractive to Jeff and Hudson Solar, and I guess I would ask you guys, what about, what is attractive to us? Because this is not attractive to me, and it's not attractive to 88 people that signed the petition and the 15 additional people that signed my letter. He also mentions going to lower electric bills. I would submit to you all that it's also going to lower our property values. So now I'm just going to read something, and I have a letter from Nick and Contrera that he asked me to read, and so then I will sit down so other people have a chance to speak. "As you may, as you all may or may not know, I have submitted a letter to the Ethics Board. I'm awaiting a ruling on that and reserve all rights in that regard. Similarly, nothing I say here tonight should be misconstrued as a waiver of any arguments with respect to any position as to the actual solar law. At the outset, I want to let you all know that Reverend Mark D. Isaacs is in Oklahoma visiting his family and could not be here this evening. Also, the In Contreras who live at 43 Frost Road and are adjacent landowners are allowing me to share the following with you. They cannot be here tonight because of health reasons. In the past four months, both of them have suffered from life-threatening cardiac events, and it is my understanding that based on their doctor's advice, they cannot be in situations where they become stressed or overly excited, which is something that would occur if they were here tonight. Nick and Contrera has signed the petition, and both In Contreras signed the letter I emailed you all today and delivered. Needless to say, they are opposed to the solar power plant. I will also be reading an additional letter from Nick at the conclusion of my statement. As to the merits of the application, just because solar power plants are permissible uses in RC-5 does not automatically entitle the applicant, applicant to a special use permit. Entitlement to such a permit is not a matter of right. The stated standards in the special use permit law condition the availability of special use permits, and compliance with those standards must be shown before any special use permit can be secured. The burden of proof is on the applicant to show that the proposed use satisfies all zoning laws. An applicant seeking a special use permit must show that the proposed use, here a solar power plant, is compatible with surrounding uses, suitable to the proposed site, in harmony with the zoning laws and comprehensive plan, that it does not adversely affect the neighborhood, including the natural environment and the rural scenic and historic character, that the development and use of the parcel in question does not have an adverse effect on adjacent lands, the immediate neighborhood or on the character of the community, and that the nature and intensity of the intended operations do not discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings, nor the impairment, nor impair the value thereof. Hudson Solar and Barry Sherrod fail their applicant's burden. First, the application's 125-67 general standards narrative consists of 24 sentences that barely pay lip service to the special use law's requirements. These 24 sentences have little or no support and include statements that were eventually disproven. For example, at the time this narrative was submitted, adjacent neighbors were able to see Hudson Solar's mockups from their property contrary to the narrative. I also referred in my letter dated today, in which I, along with 15 other neighbors, made our case for why, under the special use law, this application must be denied. Very briefly, the proposed commercial power plant would adversely affect the rural and scenic character of the Wurtemberg neighborhood. The area surrounding 355 Wurtemberg is predominantly a one-family residential and historic area that will be diminished in safety, comfort, serenity, and most importantly, monetary and historic value. To date, 88 people have expressed, expressly indicated by signing the petition sent to you earlier today that they believe the proposed power plant would negatively impact the rural and scenic nature of Wurtemberg Road. Such persons include Reverend Mark D. Isaacs, pastor of St. Paul's Lutheran Church of Wurtemberg, a national register site, numerous parishioners of the Wurtemberg Lutheran Church, the owners of the Pulse Farmhouse, a national register site, more than 20 residents of Wurtemberg Road, the owners of all six adjacent properties, the owners of the two additional national register sites in the historic one-mile stretch of Wurtemberg Road, and many other members of the community who are familiar with, enjoy, and want to see the character of Wurtemberg Road preserved. The best evidence of the impact of the proposed solar power plant on the character of the Wurtemberg neighborhood are the opinions of the people who actually live and worship in the neighborhood. The proposed solar power plant, a commercial enterprise, is incompatible with the historic residential and agricultural nature of Wurtemberg Road, a greenway and southern entrance to our community. The proposed location of the plant is literally in the historic core of Wurtemberg Road, thereby exacerbating its negative impact on the area's rich history that dates back to the early 1700s. Wurtemberg Road enjoys the second highest concentration of national register sites in the entire town of Rhinebeck, and I downloaded all of the national register sites from the state website and did the math. Two of the national register sites on Wurtemberg Road, the Wurtemberg Lutheran Church and the Pulse Farmhouse, are contiguous, are substantially contiguous to the proposed solar power plant. The installation of a solar power plant at 355 Wurtemberg Road will dominate the neighborhood and change its essential nature because there is no similar existing use in the area. Even Hudson Solar's own application materials acknowledge this by admitting that the adjoining and surrounding land uses are not commercial or industrial. Commercial development on Wurtemberg Road is not intensifying either. For one example, a single residence family, a single-family residence was recently finished at 293 Wurtemberg Road. The owners of that residence are opposed to this power plant. For another example, Eve Thomas, who owns over 50 acres on Wurtemberg Road, told me she was approached by Hudson Solar to place a power plant on her property, but said no because she had concerns that her neighbors would be upset, and she believed that having a power plant on her property for 25 years would destroy it. For yet another example, Phil Karate, who owns, I believe, the remaining vacant lot on Wurtemberg Road immediately to the north of the proposed power plant, has or had, depending on what happens with this application, plans to build his retirement home on his land. A qualified realtor has submitted an opinion that the proposed solar power plant would have an adverse effect, sorry, an adverse financial impact on the value of Mr. Karate's property. Biological extension, the proposed power plant would likely have the same significant negative impact on the values of the many other properties that are immediately adjacent to or otherwise in close proximity to the proposed solar power plant. I also believe Matt Amico, a realtor and who's residence at 62 Frost Road, which is within 200 feet of the 355 Wurtemberg property line, will also be speaking to this issue. Once commercial and industrial development of this scale and nature is allowed on this parcel, it, along with other parcels on Wurtemberg Road, will never reach their residential promise. This piece of property will forever be a power plant, as Jeff actually just sort of said, or another commercial or industrial use, and every 25 years, new panels will be installed. This is something that will never go away, and our properties will always be worthless as a result. Thus, the proposed solar power plant would discourage the residential or otherwise appropriate development and impair the values of adjacent properties. I promise I'm almost done. "The Planning Board must therefore make a common sense judgment and determine that the proposed use would adversely affect the residential and historic Wurtemberg neighborhood and would be incompatible with the other uses now existing in the neighborhood. Finally, the visual impact of the proposed solar power plant cannot be fully assessed. Since there are only four mockups outlining the corners of the proposed site, adjacent landowners have no way of assessing whether they will be able to see the other 1,556 modules that will litter the site. Moreover, Hudson Solar has apparently represented that they are going to keep the grounds between the rows of panels mowed to four feet. Thus, to adequately assess the visual impact, Hudson Solar would need to cut or trim the proposed site to four feet. In addition, since it is summer, there is no way to ascertain what parts of the proposed solar power plant will be visible during the winter. The town supervisor, Elizabeth Spinsia, told me that she does not believe the Planning Board can approve the application if there is any visual impact. Thus, at a bare minimum, this project needs to be placed on hold until the dead of winter so that the visual impact can be adequately assessed. If this does not occur and this project is approved, adjacent property owners are subject to visual impacts in the winter that likely cannot be remedied until the ground is thawed and plants can be installed. Moreover, if it becomes apparent that the visual impact revealed during the wintertime cannot be remedied and the solar power plant has already been installed, are you going to revoke the special use permit and make Hudson Solar remove the power plant? Are the adjoining landowners stuck with a solar power plant that has no visual impact only six months out of the year? This is also not NIMBY, at least not for us. Our letter makes clear that 355 Wurtemberg Road is not the appropriate site for a solar power plant because of the rural residential scenic and historic character of the area. There are many streets in the Town of Rhinebeck that have zero national register sites, zero historical buildings, and are already open to commercial and industrial development. This, however, is NIMBY for Barry Sherrod. He does not live on this parcel, so this power plant will not be in his backyard. It's also not on Jeff Irish's more than 30 acres on Bolin Becker Road. I submit to you that Wurtemberg Road is not their commercial dumping ground. Contrary to an email I received from Mike Trimble today, everything I've just told you are not seeker issues. The facts and deficiencies with Hudson Solar's application that I've outlined here today and in my various letters to you, both seeker and non-seeker related, cannot be overlooked or explained away simply because you are pro-solar, served on the task group that crafted this new solar law, or have plans to put a community solar array on land of your own. You also cannot give Hudson Solar the benefit of the doubt when it comes to all their unsupported and conclusory statements because you know Jeff Irish and Scott Bergen. I submit to you that there is only one option on this application, and that is to deny it. In closing, Nick and Contrera asked me to read you all the following letter. Dear Planning Board, I previously wrote to you on July 15th regarding the visible impact of the planned solar farm adjacent to my 43 Frost Road property. I wanted to send this additional letter to update you on my position. I no longer am neutral about this project and am, in fact, opposed to a commercial solar power plant at 355 Wurtemberg Road. I believe that the solar power plant should be denied as it would adversely affect the neighborhood, including the rural scenic and historic character of our neighborhood, is incompatible with surrounding residential uses of land, would discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings, and impair their value, potentially violates the town's noise ordinance and is otherwise inappropriate in the Wurtemberg neighborhood. One, visual impact, I cannot fully assess the visual impact of the solar field since my, since my July 15th letter, the mockups have been moved, and although I can no longer see them, it is the summer with fully grown foliage. My understanding is that there are only four mockups, two of which are closest to my property, so I can only assess the visual impact of two mockups and cannot assess the visual impact of the remainder of the solar field, including the center of it. My understanding is that, is also that Hudson Solar plans on keeping grounds between the rows of panels mowed to only four feet. This also leads me to believe that site visits would occur more than twice per year. Thus, when it is winter and there are no more leaves on the trees, I may very well be able to see the solar field from my property, including the second floor of my house. While I do not believe that the solar power plant belongs in this location as it is a residential and historic neighborhood, I think if the Planning Board is inclined to approve the application, the solar field should be moved to the very center of the property. I also believe that if the Planning Board is inclined to approve the application, it should be conditionally approved, and construction should be put on hold until the dead of winter when a proper visible assessment can be made. If in the dead of winter it is not possible to screen the entire solar field from view, then the Planning Board's conditional approval should be revoked. Two, noise level, it is my understanding that Hudson Solar's position is that the planned solar power plant will not make any noise. However, while I'm a layperson, the recent Hudson Solar application material shows that they are using 13 SolarEdge SE 33.3K U.S. inverters. The SolarEdge inverter information sheet shows that each inverter has a noise level of less than 55 dBAs. It is my understanding that a Hudson Solar customer on Frost Road who has just enough panels to power their house admits that the inverter in their garage hums. Therefore, I believe it is incumbent upon the Planning Board to hire an independent acoustic engineer, prior, and he underlines it, prior, to approving this application. It appears to me that the Planning Board will only, will be making their decision based upon information or representations made by only, and he put only in all caps, Hudson Solar. Three, value of adjacent lands, I have not had an opportunity to get a professional opinion on how this solar power plant would impact the value of my property. However, in my personal opinion, regardless of the visual impact of the solar power plant, I believe it would have a negative impact on the value of my home. It is certainly a factor that I would consider if I were purchasing a home. Having briefly looked at the application, I do not see any professional opinion in the application about this issue. Four, decommissioning, the current Hudson Solar estimate of the scrap metal in this project is just that, a current estimate. In 25 years, the value of scrap metal could be substantially less than it is today, especially if in 25 years, many solar fields are decommissioned at the same time, resulting in oversupply of this type of scrap metal. Therefore, I do not think it is prudent to assume that the value of the scrap metal will more than offset the cost of removal. It is also not certain that Hudson Solar will be in business in 25 years. Thus, it would probably be safest for the town and the neighborhood to assume the scrap metal will be worth nothing in 25 years and require a removal bond in accordance with that assumption. If the town enters into a decommission agreement instead of a removal bond, then I think it would be prudent if the agreement reads that the town may recover all expenses incurred from the removal of the plant from Hudson Solar and the defaulting property owner. Sincerely, Nick In Contrera.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Before the next person speaks, I have been getting personally, on my own personal email, copies of letters that are sent to the town planning board. They should not be sent to my home, they should be going to the town planning board secretary to become official business of the town of Rhinebeck. I don't open anything that comes from someone relative to any subjects that are on there. I will open it only when the secretary of the town planning board sends it to me. It's then an official audit trail, and there's no question about it.
Thank you.
Okay. My name is Philip Karate. I own the 15-acre piece just to the north of this...
What's the address?
What's that?
What's the address?
I don't actually have a street address there because there's not a house on it yet. It's a open lot, it's 15 acres. I've owned it for about 15 years. I have painstakingly restored it. I've rebuilt a stone wall, so I've sent you a letter that kind of explains all this. Rebuilt a carriage barn, the original carriage barn to the farm that dates back to the 1700s. Rebuilt the ponds, rebuilt the fields, and so forth. So it is a really special and beautiful piece of property. On the top, it overlooks the Catskill Mountains, and we've owned it for now 15 years, and we've worked on it slowly. We had different plans to build on it, but we kind of waited to the right time. So this kind of blindsided me that we've spent all this time and all this money and all this effort restoring a piece of property that was adjacent to a RC-5 residential piece of land. Now somehow, over the winter, I don't know how this happened, but there was new zoning in Rhinebeck. New zoning that allows an industrial operation next to my property. Obviously, I want nothing to do with this. If this goes through, I feel that my piece of property is ruined. And I feel that you have an obligation to not only worry about Jeff Irish and Barry Sherrod making money off of this thing, but you have an obligation to protect the citizens and the character of the land. Now, that's the question that I want answered, is are you going to do that? Because I hear you say you're going to put up berms, Jeff's going to plant all kinds of fancy flowers, maybe we'll get like Martha Stewart to show up and, you know, do some other things. But it's a joke. Rhinebeck has been successful, one of the most successful towns in the valley, because they have been very careful about the development and how they've treated properties. So to turn around on a dime and say it's okay because these guys have a big payday, so let's take this piece of land over here and turn it into what I consider a hunk of junk. Now, has anybody seen the solar panels on Route 9G down on Hollow Road in High Park? Have you people driven by that? Okay, Jeff, how many, how many feet is that on Route 9? Is it 500 feet on Route 9G? Is it 500 feet there on Hollow Road? Well, we're talking about having 40,000 square feet of that stuff. I could have a house, and you're telling me it's okay that I have to look down into that? This is nonsense, and it needs to be stopped, and it needs to be stopped quickly, because This is nonsense, and it needs to be stopped, and it needs to be stopped quickly, because you're going to have all these meetings and spend all this money and all this time, but you're not taking into consideration about the homeowners who've spent the time and the property owners of that area. We have an historic church that has Revolutionary War soldiers buried there, we have beautiful homes. I, myself, have maintained almost 400 feet of road frontage, and people enjoy that walk. They go back and forth, they walk their dogs, they park their car on the top at Wurtemberg Church, they look by a beautiful pond, docks, geese, everything, get complimented all the time. Why should I do that? Why should I do that if you're going to allow 40,000 square feet of glass, a big hunk of junk, right next to me? It's troubling, and it's disgusting. So, that's my story, and we'll see what happens. But, you know, we're not, we're not just going to walk away from this and allow this to happen. We appreciate the road that much, we respect the road that much, we have a lot of passion about the area. So, you know, Jeff, you're in for a battle, so that's all I can say.
Thank you.